All right, Dan, what was yours?
Uh, thanks for walking through a little bit of a fiscal year 19 recap. Start by just kind of summarizing that fiscal year 19. In all of our funds, um, we ended up in a negative position for fiscal year 20. In the general fund, our original revenue budget was four hundred and ninety-seven-five thousand. At the six-month mark, we presented some revised projections. We didn't actually amend the budget, but we did some revised projections. At which point, we increased that to expected five million, four hundred and thirty-five thousand, which is a fifty-nine thousand over budgeted amount. And a large portion of that was in anticipation of the FEMA reimbursement for the West Summit Street project. That was from 2015. Our actual revenue for fiscal year 19 was actually a little better than that. It's five million, five hundred and eighty-four thousand. So about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars over projections. Expense wise, we budgeted four million, nine hundred and sixty-three thousand. When we did those six-month projections, we decreased that a little bit to four million, nine hundred and twenty-six thousand. And actual expenditures were only seven hundred and eighty-nine thousand. So we came in at about a hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars in budgeting budget expenditures. So what does that mean for cash position? Uh, we anticipated that we would end fiscal year 19 for about two-point-eight million dollars. Add in an additional hundred and fifty thousand over what we projected, and add in the hundred and thirty-seven thousand under budgeting expenditures, uh, brings our actual ending cash balance for fiscal year 19 to just over three million dollars. Now, uh, that's two hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars over what we projected. And three million, sounds like an amazing number, uh, which it is. But keep in mind that one-point-eight million of that is already being set aside for that forty percent reserve that is required by the policy. So now there is about one-point-two million in actual cash balance. And, uh, about six hundred thousand of that, uh, through the fiscal year 20 budget, is actually already reserved for some CIP expenses. So three million dollar total cash balance, one-point-eight in reserve, that leaves one-point-two left. Six hundred thousand of that is already accounted for. It's about six hundred thousand dollars in, uh, free or, uh, unappropriated dollars at this point. Uh, so that's another little bit is the general fund. I've had some, what I call some bignesses or big gains. This could be on the revenue side or on the expense side, just kind of some ideas on where I was, I was just really off on our budget. So, uh, sales tax revenue is a little bit elevated, budgeted one million, thirty-four thousand. Projection wise, we reduced that to one million, forty-five, and we actually received one million, eighty thousand. It's about three-and-a-half percent over what we projected. Electricity franchise tax, uh, revenue, budgeted just under four hundred thousand. Uh, in the projections, we actually reduced that a little bit to three-seventy-six. And the actual revenue was four hundred and thirty. Sub-Town franchise tax fees, um, budgeted at one-sixty-five. And our projections, we increased that to one-sixty-nine. And the actual revenue was one-thirty-three. That was a little tricky, uh, as I, uh, came in here and over the last couple of years, really been digging into some things. Uh, there's a good portion of telecom money that comes from AT&amp;T. Uh, that looks very similar to cable TV franchise money when it comes in. So those were, uh, being mixed up a little bit and took a little bit of time to work with AT&amp;T so that they could, when they were sending in those checks to us, we could better communicate on what exactly we were receiving from them. So, uh, that one-sixty-nine, um, is actually, the original budget of one-sixty-five and the projection of one-sixty-nine, both of those numbers, uh, were kind of based on some wrong information. So that one-thirty-three is a little over two number. Uh, in addition to that, that type of revenue seems to be declining anyway as we're people, uh, get rid of their normal service.
And if I could, that's, that's not under to us. I mean, it's, that's just a general statement, both phone and cable.
Uh, grant revenue, this is the line item where we originally budgeted zero. And in that projection, we changed that to four hundred to sixteen thousand. That was the FEMA reimbursement. Uh, our actual revenue is four hundred to seventy-three thousand. And that, that fifty-seven thousand dollar difference or so, uh, while we anticipated receiving some FEMA money, we didn't realize that SEMA, State Emergency Enhancement Committee Agency, was also going to give us a little bit of reimbursement. So that was a nice little surprise that we weren't expecting. Building front revenue on your hand, uh, budgeted two-sixty. During our projection, we reduced that to two-forty-two, just based on the numbers that were coming in at that time, which was in the spring, this is early. Uh, our actual revenue is about one-hundred and sixty-two thousand. And I know it did my report that, uh, there's a lot of limitations on that, about number of lots available, shortage of contractors. Uh, but we do see that growth is still out there ready for us. And, uh, Jack is anticipating a lot of that coming here in '20.
And I think a couple of things there too, and we've talked about that over the last few weeks. Our residential numbers are not as what they've been in the past, but we are seeing commercial numbers thing here. Uh, I think we also anticipated in these numbers that a permanent would be pulled, uh, for the, um, price shopper. That had not been pulled yet. So there are some of those things that it's really kind of a matter of timing. Um, and we, Jack, you know, Dan and I may, um, really almost on a monthly basis trying to look at, okay, where do we need, where are we, where do we think we're going to be, and, and what does building permits looking like? And that affects not only the building permits, it affects the impact fees. Um, and so there are, there are a number of different things that affect it. There's still keeping a close eye on that as we watch development for increases.
Has price shopper been in yet? Has price shopper been in, or has it still said a price?
Uh, oh, no, they got, they're working very good, they're just waiting until they don't make any concrete from walls.
And the permit on that is like fifty dollars, right?
A little more.
Yeah.
I, I wouldn't say sixty-two is what we talked about.
It's a, it's a pretty big chunk of that dollar amount.
Uh, the next revenue item is our court revenue. This is actually really nice. Uh, we budgeted a hundred and eighty-eight thousand. Uh, and that was with the anticipation that we were going to operate to court here for six months and then transfer to Clay County for the second six months of the year. We actually transferred it only two months into the year, so that's two months of revenue here, ten months of revenue at the county. Uh, and because of that early transfer, um, we had to do a lot of things, we dismissed cases and things like that. So we really go over that projection number down to one-forty-nine, but the actual revenue came in at one-seventy-nine. So that is actually looking a lot better, uh, than we had anticipated at that big mark of the year. Are we going to do a court, court session or something, and we'll talk?
We are going to need to do that now.
Uh, and then outside, interest revenue, original budget was ninety thousand. Interest rates have been really good this year, uh, so we increased our projection to a hundred and seventy-four thousand. And actual revenue was a hundred and ninety-nine thousand.
Pacers supply your government.
On the expenditure side, we have professional services in the street department. Original budget was seven hundred and eighty dollars. That's not thousand, which is seven hundred and eighty dollars. Projection, we increased that to seventy-seven thousand. That's Amory Road Engineer. That's what type of increase in projection was. And then actual expenditures were a hundred and twenty thousand. Um, of that additional forty million or so, twenty-five of that is the easement that we approved. That was a little bit unexpected. And then, uh, the other fifteen thousand or so has to do with, we actually spent, they spent quite a bit of money to, uh, rent those detour signs that are out there for Amory. So those came out of that same budget plan that we did. Uh, professional services in the development department, original budget was seven thousand. We revised that to be sixty-two thousand, and we only spent thirty-one thousand. A big piece of that is, uh, our contract with IBTS. In the absence of that building inspector who's on military leave, the contract with IBTS couldn't perform, uh, inspection that needed. And we had utilized the appliances we needed to, and that probably relates that to that whole perfect.
Part of that is related to the price shopper and the building permits and not having as much to give her to them. So the reduced revenue can be spent less as well.
Do you think we're going to need them this year if all stuff is still, still out?
We continue, we are utilizing them right now, and there are a couple of advantages to them. One is a different set of bodies on it, thanks. That's also, um, Jack and I were just having this conversation today. Uh, their conversations with our staff have been very robust, and our staff has learned a lot and in different set buys. Um, all of the members of our staff are looking at the certification process and practicing for testing for that. So this is, this is actually helpful to them in that process. And, and they've had a really good discussion about what they're looking at. So it's been beneficial to us. We do see it continuing. Uh, Jack and I had a conversation earlier today. I think March would be earliest, do you see? A return, our staff number, maybe. Um, so, uh, we're waiting on, we, we have to have clearance for, he's got to be cleared from the military for returns.
But even with the, with him coming back, do you think we're still going to need to use them with the commercial? But one, one park and now Rollins Landing and Eagle Heights, Eagle Ridge and Randy wanted and all these new subvisions?
From a commercial standpoint, I think it would best be handled on a case-by-case. If it's a big commercial, one day, it's a smaller commercial, it's another. We'd have to just wait to see what we get.
So we haven't made a contract with them?
We have nothing in contact, and Jack correctly pointed one. We have continued to do the residential in-house.
Yes. Except for planning.
Mm-hmm. Why, because we take these tests and then?
We're trying to pull that in-house.
Right.
Which ones?
Planning and residential.
Oh, okay. Cause there's, yeah, we've got White Arches, it's got a foundation going in right now. We've got one park going in. Water commercial.
Yes. Cool. The last expansion line item on here, parks and recreation, parks and wages. Uh, this, this has kind of fallen down in recent years, but our budget was twenty-one thousand. Uh, projection, we increased that to thirty-one thousand. Actual only came in at twelve thousand or so. Not as much part-time help over summer, specifically in like the summer maintenance piece. There's a separate line item for recreation wages, so we're not talking about like recreation pensions.
Is that just because we couldn't find people, or is it?
Probably compensation, a lot of those are working in the, the lack of applications.
Okay.
We just actually out of the campground, took down a lot from that, that street that we had to, um... But yeah, I think a lot of the work we have to switch over from rec to split it up a lot.
Okay.
And the capital projects line, original revenue budget is just under four million. Projection revenue, we increased that about two hundred thousand dollars. Uh, we anticipated that we were going to sell that bond as a, that premium, and we did. So actual revenue was four hundred and eighty-two, so we're real close to that here. Expenditure wise, we budgeted five-point-six million. Uh, in the projection, we changed that just a little bit to be five million, five hundred and eighty-eight thousand. And actual expenditures only four-point-two million. So it looks like we've spent this budget a lot. A big piece of that is the Main Street Trail, which was in 19 budget, uh, which as you know, we just had that public information session a couple of weeks ago, so, uh, having any problems in that project and all that. So we anticipated cash, uh, any cash balance of just under three hundred thousand. Uh, take into that, uh, into account that we're just a little bit under projections in revenue and quite a bit under projection expenditures, one million, six hundred and fifty-four thousand dollar cash balance. And we'll talk about that a little bit more here, but this is exactly. Capital included sales tax fund, budgeted four-sixty-five. Uh, we changed that projection to be four-third to three. Uh, that four-hundred-and-sixty-five thousand dollar budget number was really based on twelve months of anticipated revenue. And now we know that that first year of the sales tax, we're going to run to eleven months. Uh, so we just, uh, reduce that projected revenue to four-third to three. But actual revenue came in at four-fifty-one, so that's right in the middle of the reserve. Expenditure wise, uh, this fund only makes a transfer to the debt service fund to pay the debt service, uh, payments. So we anticipated one-twenty-seven, hundred and seventy thousand was what we, uh, our projection was, and that's actually what we transferred over. So, uh, we projected that cash, any cash balance to three-to-five, and our actual cash balance is three-twenty-three. Debt service fund, very simple fund that takes in that transfer from capital from the sales tax, and then those have, pays those debt payments. So exactly what we transferred in is exactly what we paid out, uh, the cash balance of this fund alone. Transportation sales tax fund, uh, budgeted that same half-cent sales tax revenue, four-hundred-and-sixty-five thousand. Uh, when we did our projections, we increased that to four-hundred-and-sixty-seven thousand. Actual revenue came in at five-hundred-and-thirty-one thousand. We'll talk about that here in a second, so, uh, that's, that's a inflated number of revenues. Expenditure wise, we budgeted six-eleven. We revised that to be five-hundred-and-fourteen, and actually spent six-hundred-and-three. So even though we were quite a bit over projections in this fund, we were still under our budget, which is okay. Projected any cash balance was two-hundred-and-fifty-six thousand. Taking the revenue being over expenditures, meaning the lower projections are actually cash balance, two-hundred-and-thirty-one thousand. Now, there's a, we have to account for some leases in a pretty specific way. And we approved that five-year lease for the Skids Tier motor. Uh, we actually have to treat that as basically like a loan from the company. And we're buying the equipment, and then we're paying that lease, uh, five times every five years. So of that, five-hundred-and-thirty-one thousand revenue and that six-hundred-and-three thousand dollars of expenditures, um, there's thirty-four thousand dollars in what we call debt from, uh, debt from, you know, proceeds from debt issued. Uh, and then that same thirty-four thousand is in this number for buying that five-year lease. So both of those numbers are, are over, may appear over inflated, but it's just how we have to account for some things. So if you take thirty-four thousand off of that number, that half-cent sales tax revenue is really about four-hundred-and-ninety-six thousand, four-hundred-and-ninety-seven thousand. In the, uh, water, wastewater systems fund, uh, original budget was nine million, six hundred and seventy-four thousand. Original budget number included the two thousand and eighteen COPs, which we actually got eighteen thousand, nineteen. So we reduced that expected revenue number to four-point, four million, one hundred and sixty-one thousand. We actually received three million, nine hundred and sixteen thousand. We'll talk about that in a second. Budgeted expenditures, budgeted, uh, ten and a half million, would reduce that to nine million, two hundred and eighty-three thousand. A big piece of that reduction, this number's wrong. I don't know where I got that number. A big part of that reduction is we anticipated not the full completion of that influent pump station. And so it's well holding tank, south sewer, receptor project. And we were right there and spent, uh, just about nine million dollars. So, um, revenue was a little bit under projections, expenditures were a little under projections. Uh, net wise, they didn't change our cash balance all that much. We projected nine million, four million, nine hundred and forty-nine thousand. And actual cash balance is four million, nine hundred and seven thousand. A lot of those dollar amounts, uh, we also have a twenty, part of that is a twenty percent policy required reserve, plus there's restricted money for water impact fees, wastewater impact fees. So, uh, that's not, that money isn't all available to use either. Specifically in this one, we'll take a look at some of those revenue expense line items. Uh, water sales, uh, original budget was two-point-one, projection was two-point-two. And actual came in at two-point-two, which is a little under that projection, so we put it in here. Wastewater sales, original budget was just under one-point-one. And so was the projection, but we actually came in at one, just over one quarter, and so wastewater sales went up. Connection revenue, this is tied to building permits and the, all those new connection, new water connections to our system. Budgeted seventy-nine thousand, we revised that to be eighty-five, and actually received thirty-six. And then there's your water impact fees, wastewater impact fees, which were well under what we projected those would be. On the expenditure side, uh, some good items, some miscellaneous repairs in the midst of the water plant, wastewater plant. Uh, both of those came in well under our budget, in our projection, projected figures. Uh, similarly to the connection revenue, our connection supplies expense came in quite a bit under budget. Our electricity had a little bit of an uptick. Um, that was, uh, we anticipated, uh, the, uh, onboarding of our new wastewater plant in our electricity budget, but clearly our electricity cost came in a little bit more than what we had thought that was going to be. And then capital projects, uh, there's the six-point-eight million for that pump station project. We reduced that to five-point-eight, and actually spent just over six, so about eight hundred thousand dollars to save these amount. Last one, we'll talk about real quick is sanitation fund. Budget revenue is eight-hundred-and-one thousand. We reduced that projection to be about seven-ninety-five. Actual revenue is seven-seventy-nine. Budgeted expenditures are eight-hundred-and-six. We revised that to be seven-hundred-and-ninety-six, and actual expenditures were seven-hundred-and-eighty-six. So this one actually did take a little bit of a decrease in cash balance. We projected to be thirty-five thousand, it's actually about twenty-eight thousand. Um, I alluded to this a little bit in some of my other presentations. If, if people were not paying, if, if customers were not paying their utility bills in full, usually that item that was left unpaid was our trash service. So we've actually corrected that with the new budget here. And the, uh, if somebody only pays their bill partially, uh, the first three things that you pay are sales tax, DNR fees, and trash, because that's the thing that's responsible. So we want to make sure that that's, uh, we're, we're giving full amount of that as much as we can. And, uh, kind of on a side note, we really don't want this number to be too high in the way. If it is, that means we're overcharging, so. That's only a thousand, a pretty, pretty good figure. So that's it for our fiscal year 19 recap. Really pleased with where all those funds ended up. Do you guys have any questions on the event? No, we can sit here and all over the top. And I said CIP, we're really going to talk about the budget amendment, uh, which is on your agenda for tonight, and also kind of tie it to the CIP a little bit. So I, I included in your pocket a staff report on fiscal year 20 budget amendment. It's actually kind of made up of a few different things, but we'll talk about the fiscal year 19 carryovers first. So there's two carryovers that we know in that staff report I just talked about a little bit earlier here. Uh, this pump station, accessible holding tank, and sewer receptor project. We anticipated that that wasn't quite going to be completed for the end of the year, but it's not going to be into the fiscal year 20 budget. Uh, so therefore, uh, we need to a budget amendment. There's seven-hundred-and-thirty-nine thousand left in contracted costs on that project. So we're going to add seven-hundred-and-thirty-nine thousand, five hundred and four, uh, project cost there. Uh, but just kind of as a side note, that's, that project has been funded through that COP. We already have that money, so not able to get to our system at all on that. Uh, the other carryover that we're going to talk about is in the capital projects line. I noted in my recap that there were about one-point-three million dollars under budget, or under, uh, under our expenditure budget in that fund. A big piece of that was the Main Street Show project. We anticipated that that wasn't going to be complete, so we re-budgeted it in fiscal year 20. But we assumed that the South Marshall Trail sidewalks project was going to be complete, and it is not, um, at this point. So there's three-hundred-and-seventy-one thousand left on that contract. So I'd like to, uh, include in the budget amendment, adding three-hundred-and-seventy-one thousand to, uh, to fiscal year 20 capital projects line to complete that project. Is there any quick questions or commentary on the two fiscal year 19 carryovers? Okay. So then, the other, uh, part of the budget amendment that was in the staff report, um, the first is with, uh, the water and wastewater systems fund. So, uh, I'll try to talk through this kind of as best as I can quickly, see if it helps a little bit. Originally, we had a budget of this ninety-two thousand, two-hundred for engineering, and we're crossing twelve-inch water line. We had seventy-five thousand in the budget, uh, for the valve box engineering. We have fifty thousand in the fiscal, projected fiscal year 21 budget for Zebra Muscle Control. And then at the time, we had this raw water pump station number, uh, that we're, we're really sure exactly where that is going to fall. In talking with our engineers, uh, they've advised us that this valve box, raw water pump station, and Zebra Muscle Control, those three projects really are tied together. And they recommended that it would be in our interest to do all three of those at the same time. And in that conversation, they, uh, recommended that this river crossing water line project, uh, can be delayed at least one year. So what I'm showing graphically here is, is we're going to remove this ninety-two thousand, two-hundred for this engineering from the 20 budget, but add it into the 21 CIP. We're going to remove this fifty thousand that was in the 21 budget for Zebra Muscle Control, move it up to the 20 budget. And we're going to add in three-hundred-and-thirty thousand for our engineering on the raw water pump station. This, those changes will allow us to do the engineering for these three projects all in this year, all time together as one piece. Uh, and then look at construction, uh, though I say construction, but here's the, uh, valve box project, here's the raw water pump station project. Here's the Zebra Muscle Control project, all in 21. Now, the one question that you guys might have is why does this say one million, three-hundred-and-twenty-nine thousand? Which only have three-hundred-and-twenty-nine thousand here. Uh, that other million, we're going to take for water impact fees. That is a, a project that, uh, is directly impacting, impacting our system. Uh, and as we prepare for future growth and things like that, uh, that's a perfect use for that impacting money. So we're going to take a partial payment from that project out of those, those impact fees. Overall, what does that mean for our fund? Uh, here's our projected cash balance. This is after the 20 percent reserve. This is after we pull out water impact fee money and wastewater impact fee money. There's actually one-point-three million cash. Here's our revenues, expenditures, CIP expenditures from above as revised or as, as proposed to be amended, would leave us with a cash balance in the water wastewater system fund of two-hundred-and-seventy-four thousand dollars still. Now, as we move forward, we clearly have a need here for some additional, uh, money. These are some big projects, very big projects in here in a couple of places. Uh, we're going to be looking at CIP, or COP, additional COP debt as our two thousand and twelve COPs fall off. Um, we're also getting the water and sewer, uh, rate increases, proposing those rate increases as you might tell us, uh, advise us to do. So we're, the one of this could be flexible a bit. Um, and obviously the timing of these projects could be, can be moved around over to... But the biggest priority here is, is this budget amendment to, uh, be able to do the engineering on those three projects, uh, as soon as possible. Any questions on that piece? Then the final piece is downtown street skate east. So, uh, the short summary of this is, as, uh, HGR presented to you guys throughout the seminar, I was remembering to you. Uh, you guys had, had some suggestions to them, uh, on changing some street lighting and not doing full curb replacement, doing some, uh, just partial curb replacement. So we, we received some revised estimates from them, and they look sort of like this. Uh, let's ignore these, I'm writing the numbers for you to say. So here's engineering on that piece of downtown street skate. Then there's a bunch of different options here. And the option, um, after, as revised after that presentation on November 18th, this is for the street, the piece from Main Street to Smith. This would be brick accents, lighting, asphalt, partial curb, five-hundred-and-seventy-six thousand dollars for that piece. Then from, uh, uh, from Smith to Liberty, this would be the trail on the north side, great accents, lighting on the north side, full asphalt, building, partial curb, uh, four-hundred-and-ten thousand for that piece. So both projects together, nine-hundred-and-eighty-six thousand, five-hundred. We do have enough cash available to complete that project at that nine-hundred-and-eighty-six thousand dollar price tag. But we need to reach in the four funds to do it. So let's talk through this.
I should have. I said, I should have used finance committee?
We don't know what's there.
So I'm going to, you're not going to accomplish that. So with the fiscal year 20 budget and the capital projects line, includes one-hundred-and-two-hundred-and-forty-seven thousand for Main Street Trail. We received a revised estimate on November fourteenth, that project will be one-hundred-and-eighty-one-hundred-and-forty thousand. So if we remove a hundred-and-six thousand from the budget based on that revised estimate. Then we budgeted fifteen thousand for engineering on North Bridge, uh, North Street Skate project, two-hundred-and-forty thousand construction. For the North Street Skate project, if we remove both of those from the budget, then we have enough cash available here to pay for the fifty-five thousand dollar engineering and the first three-hundred-and-fifteen thousand dollars of that project. That essentially will take this cash balance to zero. I know it says negative two, I'm not going to let it go up to negative two dollars, it's just going to go down.
Not three dollars from the other.
So we've accomplished basically a third of the project. So we've accomplished basically a third of the project by utilizing what's left in the capital projects fund. This is a good thing because we have to expand all of that money by February of '21 anyway. It can be.
Because there's a bond process.
Those are bond processes. We have to spend two years from the issues. This could be complicated a little bit by those actual construction projects coming in at what the engineers have to do. But as our estimations sit right now, we can fund a third of the project from this one. We're going to look towards the capital sales tax fund for the rest of this, for the next piece of the project. This fund has a cash balance of 323,000. The projected half cent sales tax is 475,000. We are going to transfer 556,000 in the debt service fund this year. That is to make the payments in fiscal year '20. And that is also to fund enough of a cash balance in the debt service fund for the first 2021 payment. So we're going to end fiscal year '20 with a cash balance to where we can make the first fiscal year '21 payment, even if we don't get any revenue at all.
And that's consistent with the rights we received from the board as we were working through the budget development process.
Then we would be able to fund 242,000, the next $242,000 of street skate from this one. This would take the cash balance on this one down to zero. But this one doesn't need a cash balance as long as it's making those transfers to debt service. So this fund is available to, in addition to pay those debt service payments, it's for capital projects. So we can absolutely use that cash balance in the coming year. And even though we've been using the cash balance down to zero in this year, you can see that the cash balance does accumulate back up in future years. And also keep in mind the half cent sales tax this year generated 496,000. Our budget's only 475,000. So we're probably expecting more than 45,000 in revenue available. But it can fund the next four, 242,000.
Okay, a couple of bucks off top of it. Sure.
Then we're going to jump over to the general fund. I'm going to scroll the bottom first. The general fund, this is that 1.2 million that I talked about us having available money. We're going to spend about half of that in the fiscal year '20 budget. As it is for handlery, for these heritage park improvements, for city hall improvements, for the conference plan. But there is enough cash balance to fund, and this is the last 18,000 of this first half of the project, and 210,000 of the second piece of this project. That would leave $200,000 unfunded here. But in the transportation sales tax fund, we already set aside $200,000 for a yet to be determined curb and stormwater program. And part of the street skate project definitely is curb and stormwater related. So we can shift that 200 from being designated for that to the downtown street skate East project. That doesn't change the fund, kind of the cash balance of this fund, which we had all. That 200,000 is already budgeted, we should move it to a different project. General fund wise, bouncing back to the general fund, spending this 18,000 to finish that first piece and spending 200 for half of essentially that second piece. That will leave us with a cash balance of about 370,000. This is half, this is over and above that $1.8 million reserve. So really, we're talking about 2.1 million. But 370,000 unrestricted cash balance. The finance committee felt comfortable with a 370,000 unrestricted cash balance. If you guys don't, feel free to let me know that. Moving forward to the general fund, as we kind of talked about earlier, this doesn't look great. Cash balance goes down to 28,000, goes negative. But a lot of those expenses are related to those parks projects that we kind of have mapped out for the next five years. So if we move those projects over to this parks recreation sales tax, as I showed you guys earlier, we could leave those projects out of the general fund. That does suddenly turn our cash balance back to the positive side.
The other thing to take into consideration is while not only the parks sales tax items, as we project revenues for those type balances going forward are fairly conservative sales tax estimates as well. Can they be 2% annual or 3%?
1%.
1%, annual increase. And we've talked a lot tonight about a lot of that marginal preference going in. So we want to be conservative in looking at that. But I think we're cautious about the sticking as well.
And another reason why we use 1% as well is we originally did the planning for the bond issuances and all of that. Our financial advisor, Tom Goff, also used a conservative 1%. So it kind of fits nicely in that. We don't want to, as much as we think we might have a better increase than that, we don't necessarily want to deviate from that plan too much. So as long as you guys are comfortable, although I should, let me rephrase this a different way.
Yes, we're comfortable.
Okay. The budget amendment as presented in your regular session agenda tonight would fund the downtown street skate East project as we just discussed. So if you're comfortable with that, we feel comfortable with that.
When would that go out of the air?
Would downtown street skate East?
We actually have the engineering authorization would go to you guys on the 7th after second reading of the budget amendment, right?
Yeah, we want to make sure that we've got the budget amendment. I have it laying out to tomorrow. Let Aaron know of this discussion. And they will be ready to rule as soon as we even have first person agreement. So early January, they'll be able to give that around. And we've anticipated a spring bid.
I believe we anticipated.
And later winter could be a goal. If we were, yeah.
Make sure the first payment's come out of that one, out of the bond process. Once it seems like a period of something, it's not probably a problem.
Am I reading my Main Street term?
Well, when does, when do we start street skate? When is that construction and everything?
Once we've got bids and we've come, it would crack my guess on a timeframe like that. Notice proceed would be within.
Big bid.
Proceeded bids.
Think of it my way.
Think of it my way. I would say probably at early summer timeline. You know, it won't be affecting specifically, immediately on time, but it will have an impact.
And is this, do you think this is going to take longer differently than the other stuff did?
It's only one block. So no offense, those things.
It's two blocks, but it definitely not as long. Jack, you, your thought, I mean.
This week.
It's going to be easier to do bill at overly in June and July, I imagine.
Even.
Aug, November.
But it's simply before school starts and everything, right? So starting parades and stuff, I mean, that's what I believe.
We can surely pass it on to the next.
And the other thing, you know, depending on one, the contractor, particularly in the face of street skate, I know there were some issues, but they worked with us very well on that. And so I think.
Honestly, only they know that block, this modestory school that faces that streets. So I mean, they could shut down that block and rip it all out and be done great instead of trying to do half the side, maybe did half. Like we have in the street. There's no front, there's no front, yeah, there's no, these are front door.
Yeah. The access will be a lot different than what we dealt with.
The other, because there's going to be lots of sides of things like this.
Side differences.
Because a politics outside the back entrance as well. Hopefully, they could tear it out.
I would hope it would be more, more quick.
Quicker.
Creating everywhere.
What's the F to?
No.
Did everybody follow our culture of funds layer?
Yeah, I mean, everything looked like it was creative and efficient, so.
And I'm thinking, I've spent a lot of time in looking at the numbers, finding out where everything will fit, what can happen here, while keeping in mind that you all provided in priorities in all those funds. So we think we've ticked all those boxes. If there are concerns, obviously, let us know. But we're good about the plan as presented.
I would appreciate the what if of taking those projects out of the deal with the sales tax. That helps a lot with moving it overall.
Yeah, understanding and.
We get it.
Yep, we get it.
Yeah, right, absolutely. That depicts the importance of being able to have that to provide those revenues as well. And as I said also, hopefully, we will see greater than budgeted in freeze also in our sales tax. Release for the next season.
Fourth, fifth, and sixth, now.
And one thing I need to mention, it's included in budget amendment slash decree of order. The capital projects fund did not include or did not, the fiscal year '20 budget in the capital projects fund did not have the reimbursement from the recreational trails program grant in it this year. It actually had some in the list on fiscal year '21. So the budget amendment also moves that up as expected, I would find, you share it. Thank you.
And we, just as a brief update on Main Street, now we continue to await NFO review for the grant and our engineers are awaiting not complete final engineering and totally have all of those reviews done. So we're in communication with them on a consistent basis. And I hope to be able to do that in spring as well to be able to pull that out. There are a couple of pieces of that process that. There are some environmental issues that we'll have to make sure that we take care of relating to bats and trees. Entry group will need to occur before March 31st. So we're in constant communication with the engineers on, you know, if we have to do that now, certainly are we going to address that? We'll take care of that if we start, should have against that timeframe, so.
Lower gravitators.
We have our own requirements related to grants and other processes, we file those.
Anything else for Dan? Anything you can say? I know I actually did also work for Dan's presentation.
I give Dan all a little bit of credit on his, he absolutely, Dan doesn't, I've turned his shot on him. I appreciate him as well.
Anything else?
I have a question, it's probably more for Nikki. How's the Main Street, is there a Main Street's coming along, are they doing? Any, have any meetings or anything?
Missouri, that's me.
Missouri, thanks, you.
Yeah, we're.
And actually, in my report, I will have, so February 10th, we will have the initial meeting. The information will be off the, I can't remember this well, Town Hall. Town Hall meeting, so six o'clock, February 10th, at the high school cafeteria. Will be that Town Hall meeting, basically explaining the Main Street program to the community. As I think a couple of weeks ago, which is probably now closer to a month, we had an initial meeting of a number of the downtown business owners, the historic district group. We had probably about a dozen people here. And then Main Street reps been starting to work through the process and identify that date. So we'll be publicizing that as well. And also as part of the Main Street program, members of our Main Street group will be attending a number of training sessions. Hosted by, sponsored by Main Street program. There's one in Kansas City this spring. They have a national conference that may by the way, we can't. But look forward to being able to share those resources and information from other communities as they have progressed through those processes as well.
And then we've got the town fight kickoff.
Town fight kickoff will be February, excuse me, January 13th, that's a Monday, at six o'clock at the E school, at the cafeteria as well. And we'll begin the running run as well. We are working with David and his associate for us. And we'll learn to utilize the strategic planning process. He's working on the agenda for that kickoff meeting. And it will be kind of a combination of education background, launch information, and starting to get our hands started in the work.
Great job.
Partner for that, very.
It's just not great, isn't it?
Yeah, be careful in transport. Low weight, man. We are working to, there's a big discussion in the planning mission below the steering committee, predominantly comprised of background, a couple of additional individuals tuning that process as we roll along. Jack and I are having conversations with David and he's working with an economic consultant for Washington DC as part of that project as well. And we will have, our next call will be right after the first few years. We really had to map out the rest of that process.
Cool. Okay, I wanted to push you through your next session.
Josh, I'm going to move to your next session.
You have a second? Or a second? All the way through, you say hi?
Hi.
Close, say no. See you again in like 20 minutes. Take care.